This conference will now be recorded.
Of the city of Port Orford to order at 5:30. We will begin with our call, a roll call. Counselor Lovendahl.
Present.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, present.
Counselor Burns.
Present.
Counselor Brennan.
Here.
And we are, Counselor Bogwist and Rass not be here with us tonight. We also have present with us Administrator Radcliffe, Recorder Harrison, and we have with us, thank you so much, tonight, we have our Planning Director, Crystal Shoji, and our Planning Commission Chair, Greg Bealan, and members of the audience. Welcome. Okay, let's, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so this is a work session, but it is also a continuation of the public hearing. So do I have to open up the public hearing for the speakers?
Okay, you just need to acknowledge that it is part of a public hearing and state that the public hearing will now be open for council deliberation and that we are not taking testimony at this meeting.
Okay.
And that we will be accepting testimony.
At the next meeting.
At the next city council meeting.
Okay.
Crystal, it looks like.
And at the end of that, we shouldn't say we closed the hearing. I noticed that.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Right, okay. So actually, why don't we do that just quickly as an amendment to the agenda? Let's remove, close the hearing. Okay, can we do that by consensus? Because we're not really having a regular meeting, so I guess we're just going to do that because we're not taking actions. But I am going to open up the continuation of this public hearing right now. The purpose of this meeting, this segment, this work session, is for council discussion and deliberation. We're not going to be taking any further testimony at this time, and we're not going to be taking any action on this at this time. And we will continue the hearing at our next regular meeting. Okay. So this is a, is a bunch of, bunch of material. It's a lot of work, and I was thinking to myself again, yes, the Planning Commission spent a whole year really digging in and doing a lot of hard work, so thank you all again. And so it's a lot to, for us to try to get up to speed on. And we don't necessarily have to dig as deeply. I don't think we have to cover the same ground again. But what we do need to do is if we have concerns or questions or things that we think, well, wait a second, I don't understand that, or things that we want to do, make sure we're doing our due diligence on. Those are the things that I think we need to, at the, those are the things I was hoping we could discuss at this meeting. And, and then also, after we do that, maybe think about our plan forward for how we, how we move, move through all this material, so we can feel good about our decision. So with that, I would just like to open it up with maybe around Robin, if, if people have things to, concerns or questions they'd like to bring up. I don't think, did you hear any specific questions, Joseph, from council? No. So Counselor Lovendahl, can I turn it to you? Do you have any questions or concerns you'd like to bring up?
I had a couple, but I'll just do one to start off with. Regarding the ADUs, and I noticed that in the, we decided that we would have ADUs as a way of perpetuating long-term rentals. So in our short-term rental code, we say that ADUs are not to be used as a short-term rental. But I noticed that we didn't put that in here under the definition of short-term rentals. And I, and I only bring this up because perhaps maybe it should be in the definition to clarify that that's not the use of an ADU.
Yeah, yeah. Page 10? Page 10 of an ADU?
I think it's. You note that, maybe it was in another part, where you stipulate that we mentioned that you didn't put it in that definition.
Correct.
And I'm not quite clear on that.
So we were advised by the state to put it in our short-term rental code. Instead, in the ADU code, since the short-term rental code.
Greg, do you want to just come up and speak into the microphone? Thank you.
We were advised that since our short-term rental code is in Chapter 5 Business Licensing, that we should put that piece in the business code since it's part of, it is essentially part of the short-term rental code. And if we're in the zoning code, it would be subject to land use decisions, which can get really lengthy and tricky. And so it just simplifies it. That's why we put, that's why it was recommended by the lawyers that we put the whole short-term rental code in business.
Right.
But I, y'all just haven't taken it up yet. I have a motion to put it in the short-term rental code, and I think that y'all are just waiting until us settles on this one to do that.
Yeah, it was presented for us at the last meeting, but we had such a long agenda, and it just seemed like we're not going to probably take action on that until we figure this out. So it seemed like it would go together. So I kind of held off on putting it on the agenda until.
Right. Does that?
The lawyers told us not to do that for the sign code stuff, too, because they said if you mention it as part of your land use code, you may be putting it in an appealable item. So that's the same thing he was saying.
Right.
What else should we take out of there?
Okay, that's a really good, but that's a very good question, but that's, so we kind of have that ready to go to make sure, because I think that is a very good point and important point, Sarah, we don't want these to become vacation rentals.
Right. We want to workforce, affordable housing, workforce housing, longer-term rentals.
Did you have, do you want to do anything else? Or Brett, did you want to, do you want to just take turns? Do you want to do it that way?
I, for, at the moment, on this first go around here, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I.
Okay.
I'm glad that we heard that that's, that's a good, that seems like a really good move, and I hadn't put that all together yet.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to seeing that come for us.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, Gary or Counselor Burns, do you have any?
I.
Things you'd like to raise?
At the end of today, going through everything, it seemed like enforcement is, it's so crazy to be doing this when there's all these situations that are in the city that aren't even close to this. And if we're not going to do anything about that, then there's, I'm not sure where we're getting by adding new.
You mean like, when you say?
We've got people living in every possible kind of dwelling, from tents to shacks to boats to cars.
So it's discretionary.
On the right away, multiple trailers on properties.
Yeah.
That would be, you know, they're not even ADUs.
But I totally understand what you're saying, let's not codify something that we're not going to enforce, right? Is that, that's what you're saying?
It just seems like that should be a part of what we're doing here, because if it isn't, then I'm not sure what we're doing.
Well, I think it's a little bit of a, I think it's a little bit of a different discussion. I mean, we have, I mean, this idea would be like somebody says, gosh, I've got some extra space on my place here. I would be comfortable having, or I'd like to build a unit, and then I can rent it out and contribute to the community that way, or whatever. As, and they couldn't do that, or they could do it now. They couldn't do it now. They have done it, but they couldn't legally do it. And so when somebody goes to sell a house that doesn't have a legal dwelling, I mean, I think I have those in my neighborhood, like the illegal apartments and things like that. I mean, we have this all the time, like 80% of the people follow the law and maybe 20% don't, so I don't know. How else to say that? But it doesn't seem like we shouldn't do anything, then.
It's, I think it's in the nature of planning that you don't always have the situation you want to have, but you're, look forward to a situation that you want to have. The good thing about having criteria that people can meet that is actually legal is when there becomes a time that there is enforcement, those will not be yet affected. And so it doesn't affect.
The ones who are in compliance.
It doesn't affect the ones that are in compliance, exactly.
Control dates are cool for that stuff, too. You know, some kind of weird control date that, that was kind of my idea 10 years ago with these vacation rentals was, maybe we can't do anything. Maybe we don't got the intestinal fortitude to tackle this right now, but let's set a control date. And I don't know if some, like, this could be done about those illegal structures, this and that, but if we add 100 new legal ADUs, then the 10 that are bad, they're, they're stirred the law right now, they don't get to comply. They're done, they're out of there. So that's something that, you know, I've always thought would be helpful. It's just, that's to reward those who, or not to reward, but to, to just exclude those who weren't playing by the rules, because it is such a voluntary thing. We don't have enforcement, you know, it's complaint-driven enforcement only goes so far. But there's probably a lot, it would be neat to, have we ever put together the, so it seems like, I've been down this road a few times, every time it kind of seems to, like, the enforceability of things and, and how you get, you know, how do you get something from somebody if they don't have anything, right?
Yeah.
Or, and do we really want to do that? But I think that's not, those aren't the people, those aren't the six trailers in the backyard. These are the one apartments that the people could afford to, potentially afford to, likely, likely afford to be able to do it. So I just, it would be neat to have, like, it's just what Gary was saying, with no teeth, there's, it's laws without enforcement are just really, they almost undermine you even, because you create more illegal behavior. If you create tighter laws and don't enforce them, then there's more.
Sarah?
I think that part of this was twofold.
Sorry, Gary. I agree.
It's part of the, I, yeah, part, twofold. One, we had to come in compliance with state law, state regulations. We were out of compliance, some of the language, so that was one part. And the other part is it provides sort of a framework for our, you know, and it actually will help with building permits and planning. So we're, we have a structure, and a lot of it, I don't know, you know, some aspects that, you know, enforcement is, is an issue. And as Greg said, in the future, we hope that, you know, every, you know, we have more compliance. But a lot of this just provides a framework and a structure for people who want to build or for how we develop our wonderful little city. That's my two cents.
Do you have any other, I mean, does that make sense to you, or? Because I know you were really, actually, really interested in this idea because of your concern about housing, so.
Right.
Or of the ADU part, at least, of these things, yeah.
Sure, and I, and I want to see more housing, and I think this is awesome that we've got the grant and we're able, and you guys did all that work. But I, it just struck me near the end of reading all these things of the way they're supposed to be, and then just thinking, just driving down jacks in one street, or just through my neighborhood of all of the infractions and, and just wondering how the two, it's like two different worlds.
Yeah.
In my mind. And so I just wanted to bring that up. And I didn't know if there's any way in this process that we could build some kind of teeth in the ordinances, you know, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, so that, so that's one of the topics that the Planning Commission has looked into as, to wondering whether we should make a recommendation for, to you all, to the, to the council, to have us work on, and it's something about enforcement. So there's that. But I also wanted to mention that one of the benefits of doing this through our codes and through the, through the city and getting through planning is that it's the tax base. These, these units can be taxed, and they will be taxed. And that's, in fact, in cities, that's one of the reasons that people do it without going through the city, is to, is to avoid taxes.
Can we write, can we write in, like, back taxes or something into the code? Like, if, if somebody's not playing by the rules, and then they can't, can you do that? Can you say, well, no?
Well, there's ways to do it. But number one, you usually need money and an enforcement officer to pursue somebody. Even when we had our attorney, she could just write some letters sometimes and get people to come into compliance, but you have to either have an attorney or somebody out there checking on things. So I think it's a different topic.
The county had put together a team a few years ago, I don't know if you guys remember that.
Yeah, and it, it fell apart.
Did it?
Yep. But I think that, I mean, I know that Administrator Radcliffe has been working on enforcement of some of the circumstances that we have in our community. It is complaint-driven. But I think that the aspiration, if you remember, on our council priority list is to work towards doing that better. And it's been something we've talked about for a long time. And I think, in my view, the way I'm envisioning that we could tackle it might be something like what Greg is saying, or staff, that we think about enforcement in general. What are, what are the barriers? What are the problems? What are, what's going on in our community? What can we do? And kind of do that as a separate thing, like, maybe after we get through the budget, or, you know, like, put it out there, something we want to tackle. But I don't think we.
Because it could be, like, just coming up with a plan and having phases and have to.
Yeah. And making sure that our.
The is most.
Yeah, having a little bit more structure or protocol for what we want to do, or so anyway. But like Crystal, I think maybe that's not, you know, we could, should deal with it separately and come up with a plan for how we're going to deal with it, because I think we should deal with it better, you know? I think everybody would feel much better if we did.
It's hard to want to comply with some ordinances when you drive around and look at some things. You know, it's, it is. And then also, the city isn't in compliance with some of the, or, you know, like, the cutting the brush and this, I mean, there's things that we are out of compliance with, so.
Those are the things.
You've got to take that into consideration as well.
So I think that would be a good separate discussion to have at another time. So let's, I would, I'm going to put that into the, yeah, what do they call it? The parking spot?
Parking lot.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, or, I like, would rather have a, into the meadow. Let's say that. Okay. So Counselor Brennan, we'll, we'll go around. Do you have any questions or concerns you'd like to raise?
I had a question on page 36, Item C. It says an ADU is permitted to have a maximum footprint of 600 square feet, including enclosed habitable space. And I'm just wondering how they came up with that number.
Well, we talked about this for several years, because we were going through this code previously in 2022, and then it kind of got stopped. I think the city got other priorities, and so we didn't go through with it. And then we got this grant to do it. And at both times, the Planning Commission felt that there needed to be some point of size that has to do with the houses, and many communities do. So that you have, your ADUs are obviously accessory. You don't want them taking over and then being, an ADU becomes.
The main house.
Yeah, the main house or something, but it wasn't really set up that way. So it was, I guess you could say it's somewhat random, but there was quite a bit of discussion about it.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking is because if we're looking at this for potential long-term housing, for workforce and things like that, if you have young families coming in, is 600 square feet going to be adequate for a family?
Yeah, maybe not, or maybe, depending on the family's means. But, you know, a lot of people came to our public hearing on this, and they wanted tiny homes. And the Planning Commission didn't decide to do tiny homes specifically as their own thing, although there's probably nothing against them if they can meet the codes. But they thought they would encourage, you know, tiny homes, smaller homes could be along with the ADU.
Okay, because I, you know, obviously you don't want an ADU to exceed the size of the pre-existing home, but I was just wondering if the 600 square feet is.
I suppose there's other ways you could do it. You could do it as a percentage of the size, or, you know, there's a lot of ways it could be done.
So, for example, Portland is, it's like 600 or 700 feet or a third of the size of Mainwell.
Okay.
We talked about the different sizes, you know, you all think it should be bigger, you know, it could be.
But then you have to have measurements, and you have to have somebody out doing that, you know.
To make sure, you mean like, if you're doing a third of the size of the, it's a little bit more complicated?
And keep in mind that if a person must put another dwelling on the property, they can always look at the price. This is kind of a special, small or sort of granny's flat idea, or if your kids get older or, you need a place for your children or a place for the.
Or you're bringing your aging parents in.
Aging parents, relatives, or just a rental for a worker, school worker, or whatever. It's not a one-size-fits-all.
And an aging person that had a big house could move into an ADU and rent the house to a family, so that'd be another option.
You know, I was wondering, I, I've been meaning to do this, but I just haven't had time of, you know, kind of looking at the geography of a lot and a house and just figuring out, well, what is that 600 compared to? Like, how does it all fit onto a lot? You know, did you guys do that, or do you have any?
Well, they still have to meet the set max.
Right, so they have to meet the, so, I mean, it's.
So it could be a garage, it's already there.
Yes, it could be a garage. But it's kind of, like, you don't really have a huge amount of, if you have a small house, maybe you could do some, I mean, there's not a lot of space on a lot of lots.
You don't have to do it separate either.
Yeah.
It could be in the existing garage, I mean, make, make the garage into the ADU, or you could make it in an attic space. You know, there's different choices that people could make.
So then theoretically, an ADU could also be, like, bumped up against the pre-existing home if they decided.
Or another room, I mean, another rooms added to the home.
That way they maintain the setbacks.
And how would that be different than a duplex?
There's actually a definition in the front that says, there was that question at the Planning Commission hearings from one of our citizens. And he said, I think he had a duplex, and he wanted to know what was the difference. And I looked it up, and the state put out an answer to that, I believe in 2022. Was the only thing I could find on that. And they said, a duplex and an ADU can sometimes be the same thing. And in that case, a person can decide which they want it to be, and they can change through the lifetime of the property if they want it to change from one thing to the other.
There was a benefit.
Yeah. And that's in our definitions now. I mean, not the ones we have already, but in the proposed ones.
Uh-huh.
Okay, I'll go back to Counselor Lovendahl, you look like you have another question.
Are we going to go over conditional, your conditional use permit?
Okay. Yeah, I think that should be, let's do, well, yeah, let me, I was gonna, I was going to just, for example, to start out, just say, what are people's big questions? And then, to me, it seems like that would be a good topic to discuss, that topic alone.
I'd like to, I'd like to talk about conditional uses and site plan reviews, because I think that's a real, kind of a, one of the structures in the codes that's new and different. Do you want me to do that now, or?
One second.
Okay.
Just in the sense, does anybody else have any big things they want to bring up? And then I would say, please do tell us about that.
I'm kind of still working on the size, the, I didn't really think of the size of the 600 square feet, being what that is, that, or what, so Oregon, and it has, its average Oregon home is 1,900 and some hundred square feet, and trending downward and smaller in size. But I found Port Orford here, and I'm trying to quickly see, sorry, you guys can go ahead, I just, I.
Okay.
That might be a significant thing to touch on here, because 600 square feet gets you a person. And, and we're probably hoping for more.
A tiny home can be 300 square feet, and people live in 300 square feet.
They do, and, and like I said, things are trending downward, but.
A lot of the homes in the Hamlet were 800, about 800 square feet. And they're on a 5,000 square foot lot, and some of that's not even usable, because there's so much water.
Water.
All throughout the city, we have that issue. So actually, 600 seems pretty reasonable if you, depending on how you carve it up.
Percentage-wise.
A couple and a.
And for a lot, too, I mean, if you're on a thousand, depends on the size of a lot. I suppose there's lots of numbers to.
A lot of lots are about 50 by 100, right? I mean, that's kind of.
5,000. 5,000.
5,000, yeah, 5,000 square feet is the code minimum lot. Yeah.
A minimum with 50 feet.
The commercial zone allows any lot size.
That's correct.
Or even smaller.
Yeah, and that, that's for whether it's houses or shops.
Okay, I'm going to put a, I'm going to put it, a mark on the side for you, Brett, to come back to just whatever, like.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a.
We need a piece of graph paper to pull around.
I would like to say one thing about ADUs before we go off that. Throughout the United States, it's pretty common that ADUs are a helpful thing to housing in what they call small towns, which I think are much bigger than this, but they don't even talk about the, the towns are size. But they're, they're calling it, small towns like them. But they're also saying that it's not a end-all and be-all solution, that you don't have a lot of them all at once. You know, you might have a few happening and a few happening again, but it's not going to build you massive housing.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking to myself, it's probably pretty expensive to build a structure that's even a 600 by 600 square foot.
Or you can bring in a manufactured structure.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, you know, if somebody was going to consider it an investment, it, it would take a long time probably to make that work.
It seems to me that if a person wanted to make an investment, they would put a duplex in.
Yeah.
Which would be just more work, more money.
Yeah.
This is kind of the simple way to do things.
Those tiny homes, I've seen them, pretty nice ones for 30 grand or something like that, huh? Isn't that about, I see rents go, you could probably rent it for $1,200 here at this day and age. I would, I mean, it could, and it's.
So a tiny home could be used as an ADU? There's no minimum size, it's just the maximum size? Okay.
But could there be more than one if it's below the minimum? No, okay, all right, thank you.
Recorder Harrison?
Just for clarification, there's no defined minimum for the size of ADUs, but they would still have to meet utility requirements to make sure there's no cross-contamination. There are other things that would limit how small they could get, but it would still, you know, we're just not saying that there's a defined smallest. It's going to be covered in other areas of the code.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, Crystal, why don't we turn it over to you then to give us a little bit more background information about conditional use in the site plan review? I was, I was going to ask if you could help us to understand what is going to be different with this new.
I think that's important.
Site lot, site plan review compared to what we have had.
In your code, you have use zones, and those are on page 19. And we went through those a little bit last time that we were talking about the code. And in the use zones, we have, of course, as you know, already, but I'm going to review it, outright uses, those are permitted uses, and we have conditional uses. We had a lot of things as conditional uses in. We had a lot of things as conditional uses in our code. And we're proposing at one time to have more. Unfortunately, conditional uses are not necessarily the way that the regulations are going outside of small cities for several reasons. Number one, there's some things like housing where you are required to have clear and objective standards. So if you are required to have a more housing and the housing has to have clear and objective standards and you put a new motel under a conditional use, they won't accept that. The state won't accept it because it is not clear and objective. Because a conditional use is more of an old-fashioned thing, which we like to do in small towns especially, where you have give and take with the person who's doing it and the planning commission. And it's usually pleasant, it's not, you know, it's not like a big fight or anything. But when I saw all the conditional uses that we were going to be creating just so that we could put standards on something, I realized that it probably wasn't going to fly and that you guys wouldn't like it because conditional uses have the impression of not having clarity. In other words, even though I don't think that's true, because conditional uses have always, they've been appealable, but they, they have always had a little bit of like this give and take thing, negotiation and things like that. And the state and the governments are not liking that. It's, it's just not the modern way. They want clear and objective standards so that when somebody comes in, they can see what they have to do and not go in front of a body and talk about it. So we took most of those conditional uses, which were, there was quite a few of them we had put in there just because we wanted some standards on them. In other words, when Dollar General went in, the planning commission was a little disappointed, a lot of them, and the public because they felt like the city was left out of the negotiation part. And the city was. I mean, when I was working on that, I didn't like it because I had to work directly with engineers, as Joseph would have to, and make sure that they were meeting all the requirements, but we didn't have anything to say about them. And neither really did the city. It was just, we, it was a checkoff, like I had to make sure they were meeting the requirements that we had. And otherwise, it was up to the engineers. So that's, you know, we kind of went through those gyrations. And then we started talking about site plan review instead because Joseph does that all the time. And yet our code doesn't even, you know, current code doesn't even recognize it. It's like, we just do it and it's like almost a separate thing. So when somebody wants to build a house, Joseph needs to do a site plan review to see if they have met all the requirements. So we were looking for a way to take a lot of those businesses that were at one time kind of going to be proposed as conditional uses and give them standards so that they were a little bit more modern, not so much negotiation and people weren't scared of it, thinking they were going to be appealed all the time. And so we started talking about site plan review and realizing that we were already doing site plan review, but we didn't have a definition of it in the code. In other words, everything that comes in that's going to be new, that's going to be built, has to have a site plan review. And Joseph is doing it. And Joseph doesn't need to have all of that on his back for everything. There should be an opportunity if a, if a business is being built or a new, new, something new and it's larger than just a little, a house or something, to take that in front of somebody and have people see the checkoff. Does this, does this fit, is this what we mean? And the state said the way we were doing it wasn't quite right. We relied a lot on the state attorneys in the housing division because that's their job. And we don't have our own attorney to respond about things right now. I mean, we have one, you can use the attorney when you need it, but it's not here with us. It's not somebody that can guide us on the daily thing. And so the state said we should be using limited land use decision, which is a site plan review process that is set up all around the state and we just hadn't gotten into it for anything. And the site plan review process says Joseph could be reviewing something, it's over 2,000 square feet. That's the number that the planning commission set and it's not a dwelling. So somebody's building a new commercial building over 2,000 square feet. Then that would go through site plan review as a formal process. Yes, Joseph would be involved. We were going to have the planning commission involved and the state said, you can't do that because that makes it quasi-judicial. So you can have the staff, they're a separate group, but you don't put it in front of a decision body that makes an appealable thing. So we went through a lot on this and then we incorporated the requirements of limited land use decision, which has been in the state code for a couple decades. There was never anything saying you have to put this in your code, but we were expected to use it if we could. And they said, use that. And so we did, we put that in here and it does have an appeal opportunity in it. But that's, everybody that's supposed to be in the area, I think it's 100 feet or 200 feet of a new building that's over 2,000 square feet, that's not a residence, would get notice. And then if they want to appeal the decision from what they see on the notice, they're calling it an appeal. It's more like, we want to have a hearing on it, we want to talk about it, then they can. And that's how the counties have been doing it around here for quite a while. And I've gone through that process a lot and it actually does make it easier when you go through that process because you don't have to have a public hearing unless somebody is specifically asking for that public hearing. And so almost all the uses in our permitted uses that are over 2,000 feet, square feet, not residential, then would go through site plan appeal, which is probably not a lot right now, but over time it would be some. And then people, if people wanted to be involved in that, they could appeal it. I mean, they could say, no, we want to have a hearing on this, called, called an appeal.
And then if it was a hearing, it would be before the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And anything that the planning commission decides that's a final thing can be appealed to the city council.
So the difference in this, because what you were saying, it kind of sounded like there was, it was not going to be, there was not really a quasi-judicial path, but it does sort of sound like it gives the community maybe.
It's very similar.
A better opportunity, yeah.
But it, but I know that people like it when it says it's a staff site plan review. Because I've been at hearings and people are like, oh, no, we don't have to really go through a conditional use. It's a staff, it's a staff one. Some of them call it ACU, administrative conditional use or something like that.
I have a question for recorder, or I should say assistant planner, Harrison. Do you feel like this is going to be, would have the potential to create more work for you? Or does the fact, the way that it's becoming clear and objective standards, does that make it more straightforward for you? Or what's, when you think about your workload, what is?
So realistically, I don't think it would have too much of an impact on my overall workload, just thinking about the things that have been conditional use since I've been here. I just think it will create a more streamlined process that might not make us have to go through the entire process of a conditional use permit if no one objects to it. And it will bring us closer to the recommended code that the state wants us to have. So I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there, what are the benefits of complying with the state? I'm just curious that we're not.
Well, their job is, they, they're setting up a housing division up there and their job is to protect us from ourselves. So when they, Greg and I worked with them on this code, kind of after we had gotten to a point for the planning commission hearing. And, and they said, our job is to stop you, if we can, from doing things that people are going to appeal and that are going to get you into luba.
Oh, right.
And we didn't even know that's what they were doing at first. I mean, I said, I said, why do you wait until the last minute to give us these instructions? And then they said two things. One, it was our fault because we hadn't been sending them copies and that was some things that we kind of missed out on for different reasons. And then, second, they, they explained to us, they said, well, we're new and this is what we're here for. He wasn't new, he was been in, he's been in the department for a while and I had worked with him, but I didn't know that his job was to try to keep us out of trouble.
And Crystal, if you can clarify, or this requirement for clear and objective standards, is that like a new thing from the legislature? Is that part of the housing thing or is it?
That's part of the housing thing and it's been, they've been talking about that for about 15 years.
Okay.
But they're, they're getting more adamant about that. And that's why they were objecting to us having a apartment as a conditional use. Because we were going to have, there was one zone where we had multifamily uses, the Battle Rock Zone. And it was, it was in the conditional use section. And they said that shouldn't be there. And I said, what are you talking about? We don't even have a bunch of those. And he said, yes, it is, you have that multifamily dwelling in there and that needs clear and objective standards.
And this is, I think, interesting, just in light of, I'm going to just bring up, I think at the last meeting, Brett, you brought up the idea, it was about the conditional use thing, which we should talk about, or well, we should talk about the conditional use extension issue or concept. The idea of, does having more verbiage in something give you more or less discretion or whatever? And having things be clearer kind of removes the ambiguity.
So you're saying the need for discretion or?
Well, no, what I'm just saying is it kind of cuts both ways because if you leave it to discretion, then there's all this ambiguity that leaves, that leaves you potentially open for appeal or litigation or whatever. Where if it's like, hey, these are the three things you have to meet, meet them, then the person knows what they got to do and it's.
Inside the confines of the, the rules that are created or the, but it also, if left to appeal, left to the council, then it, you get community standards. You get, what does the community want? And, and that's the other side of that.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I think what, Crystal, what you're describing is kind of sounds like it's going to help us achieve maybe a little bit of both. I mean, I'm thinking about the, the tower proposal of recent years that the community was just beside themselves.
And it never was going to happen, the code wasn't going to allow it.
Well, but, but there was.
There was some question.
But they got.
I couldn't say that out loud, but the code was going to come up eventually against the Aeronautical Board and stuff in Salem. And they were not going to allow that.
Right, but, but the point was, at the time, the community was saying, oh, my gosh, this is a really important thing right in the middle of our community and we don't even get to say anything. So it seems like this process could, it would give, if it was a certain size and a certain specific criteria, it says, if something's like that, we want to make sure the community does have an opportunity. And then there are clear and specific standards and it goes through the whole thing. So, I don't know, I think it sounds pretty good.
We don't know, I mean, you know, nothing's ever perfect.
Somebody can sit down in Arkansas and figure out what they want to do here in Fort Worth, that's good. And that's what we, I, my thinking is that's what we would strive, strive for. It's just easy, common sense, clarity, you know, layman terms, you know, everything that keeps us out of these types of things. Whether or not that, you know, it can really happen, I don't know or not, but, but that is, that tells a developer or a family or whatever, whether they want to invest here or not, I think that there's, you know, when we get to, when we get to say yea or nay on something, after they've already looked at it and seen that in their opinion, this is good, then, and it's left to some yahoos sitting around a table, you know, I mean, that, that seems bad, it seems.
You mean city council? Are you the yahoos?
We are the yahoos. And it would just, you know, it would be really, while it does, though, however, community standards like, like that's a, you know, just like discretionary enforcement, that's, that's too, is community standard, so.
Well, the thing is, we're trying to get the community standards into the code.
Yeah, but those, those are non, it's not, code takes so long, you know, like we, like next, next year, maybe three of us are gone and there's just, maybe there's people that just want absolute growth, no matter what, any cost, whatever like that. And, and they're elected by a landslide election and now they got to fight this code that maybe isn't, doesn't serve the community at that given time. So it's like jury nullification or, you know, Oregon's blessed with some of these great tools for the community to exercise their, their will. And that's why, it really cuts both ways, like what you're saying, I, I'm kind of torn on, on that part of it. Because like I said, it would be great if somebody in Arkansas could know what to do, but at the same time, if it's 10 years behind, you know, like when's the last time this was updated or whatever, it, you know, are we already behind the eight ball? It, it, my concern is just that it takes so long for government to, which is good.
Well, it cuts, that also cuts both ways.
Yeah, right.
Because we're being, we're being.
I, I trust that everyone's doing their absolute best to, you know, I guess it's just hard to understand or predict what actually is the best. If there was some safety net where you could make some kind of a, that's why I hate taking the, any of that discretionary powers away from councils because you lose any of that safety net. Because what if there was 100 people in here saying, this is terrible or?
They can appeal it to the council.
But, but, right, right, right. But oftentimes we look at that and we say, well, here's what, you know, an appeal means it's already been denied. And it's been denied on these terms, this is why it was denied because of this. So you're already up against something, you know, it's, it carries a negative connotation in my opinion that something's already been denied when you appeal, so I'm making an appeal. So it seems like you're already, a person is already at, at a, you know, at a loss to some degree that they're fighting, you know, appeal.
Well, that, but that's why we're trying to get the things right to begin with. And that's why it's great, these guys have really tried to think it through. And that's, I mean, we do our best at this point and, I mean, but we also, I really like the idea of having an opportunity for the community to be able to engage, just, I mean, I'm going to bring up that tower thing. There were 100 people and maybe 60 people and there was no thing that any council member couldn't even talk about it because it was this weird, I don't even remember why it was so weird, but there was no.
The port already had shut it down, that was, that had been going on for five years at the port, so.
So, but anyway. Okay, now, Crystal, you talked to us about those two things, any other questions about, oh, yeah?
Quick thing after hearing council discuss it, specifically bringing up the tower. As a staff member who would be in charge of this, I will, I would like this specifically because then I'm not the person who's in charge of saying whether or not the tower can go in. I can say, that's the planning commission, it's, you know, if they've met all the checks on the checklist, then, you know, it's up to the community to say, we have a problem with it, take it to the planning commission and then the planning commission can put in the, you know, the community input.
Yeah, right, so that's a good point, Joseph. So we won't say, oh, my gosh, can you believe Joseph approved the tower? 125.
He followed the code and unfortunately it met the code. He followed the code and unfortunately it met the code and there was nothing we could do.
Yeah, there are situations like that.
Yeah, yeah. And those are the things where you can't plan for everything.
That's right, right.
Okay. Did you have any other things along those lines that you wanted to explain?
I just wanted to explain a little bit about that.
Yeah, that's super helpful. And I, I've been observing that the county shifted over to that process and paying attention and it seems like, it seems like people don't really pay attention to them. Like, and I remember back in the day, they were having planning commission meetings all the time and, but like 90% of things are sort of garden variety things and don't require greater attention. But that 10% is important.
I think that whole thing about conditional uses too, that there's another thing about them because some people call it the good old boy process. And they don't, the state doesn't want us to have a good old boy process where, you know, if we like them, we'll find a way to approve it. And if we don't like them, then we'll make it different, yeah.
That's where the question becomes especially a staff, that it's nice to know that we would be protected in helping make these decisions or, you know, that, that it's clear enough that we don't look like we are compromised or that there is something along those lines. Because oftentimes what we have, we don't really get to have an opinion of if it's good or bad or beautiful or not. Or, yeah, I mean, that, that isn't our role. Our role is to make sure that it meets whatever the council has decided or the planning commission. For whomever it is, it doesn't matter. We don't, we don't get to have an opinion on that. It's just, these are the, these are the rules of engagement and it's nice to know when the rules of engagement are clear, but then you can also have some discretion. You know, I understand that as well. However, if I'm making a decision, the more clear and the more I can understand what the spirit of the situation is or the, or the letter, the rules are, so that I have something to be able to say, this is why, and I can articulate that, that feels better for staff. I will speak for myself.
And the person possibly wouldn't appeal because they understand the process of why.
Correct. And, and you can just, again, I prefer to meet people where they are and to try to explain it and help them understand. And, and I think people, if they can explain themselves and can be heard, but then they at least need that part. So maybe being able to appeal it or to say that they feel like they get their time to say what they want to do. But it does help, especially when they, at first glance, when they come in to have clear expectations so that, this is the whole thing about Port-au-Prince, I said it even in my interview, like, we want to keep it somewhat funky, but not like super funky. Like, we still have to have some rules for it, but we want to, you know, have it, we still want it to be quirky in ours, but we also need people to be safe and to have, you know. Lots that have. Yeah, to develop. Yeah, for sure.
Help people respect each other.
Correct. I mean, we need to have rules of engagement. And, and this, I mean, I, I think like from, you know, the times that we get into sticky positions are the times when things are not clear and there's too much gray area. And it's like, oh, I can't believe, why isn't the code clear, you know? But anyway. Okay, well, I have a specific question I wanted to ask if we can go back to maybe this is, it's fun to talk about the bigger things. But on page 12, top of tw, page 12, we're going through the definitions of various different types of things. And I noticed you've got the single unit, the multi-unit and the two-unit. And the single unit and the two-unit kind of describe are very parallel and similar. But then the multi-unit like is different. It does not require, you know, like independent, I haven't gone back to look at this. It's, it's different because it has, and I'm just wondering if you could describe why that is.
Well, you may or may not like this. So this is something that you guys can be thinking about. Our current code talks about multifamily units and motels and things like that as being one building. And so this was an attempt to say that a multifamily dwelling could be detached units. If they had some of these common elements, stuff that grouped them together as one unit.
Like the cluster.
Could it be on different tax lots?
Could it be what?
Could it be on different tax lots?
Well.
No, I wouldn't think so, but maybe or?
Legal lots, tax lots and legal lots are different, I'm sorry, but.
No, okay.
But you would want it on probably one legal lot.
Because it really, I don't know that.
One unit, one, one thing, yeah. But a lot of the old lots, Joseph and I were talking about that earlier and some of you are here, but a lot of the old lots in the city, there's a bunch of them. And they're still where you can put them back into one big lot if you want to, yeah.
I guess the thing I was wondering about is, you know, there, it doesn't say like spaces for living, sleeping, cooking. So, you know, I was wondering if you were trying to create the situation where you have a common space with like bedrooms. And then, you know, you get into the situation, well, if these are allowed to become vacation rentals, uh, you know, are you creating the opportunity for like boutique motel sort of sitting, situation for a multi-unit instead of housing? Because the house, it doesn't say that you're supposed to have living, sleeping, eating, cooking sanitation for each unit.
That would be in the definition of a dwelling unit.
Okay, so, well, there's a dwelling, single unit, a dwelling, multi-unit and a dwelling, two-unit. So you're saying that the dwelling one, single unit?
Eight dwelling units, dwelling units would be multiple dwelling.
You're saying a multi-unit encompasses a single unit?
I'm saying a multi-unit would be a number of single dwelling units.
Okay.
Which could be in the same structure or they could be separate structures.
Okay, I think that definition is confusing because it, to me, it looks like there was single, two, multi, but it looks to me like the multi is a, is a different thing.
The term dwelling unit is a term of art kind of in planning.
Uh huh. Well, then why have it?
It means cooking, you know, sanitation.
But it's not in our, and it's not a definition in our code, dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit, oh dwelling unit, dwelling.
Means a detached building, including an independent living facility for one or more persons with provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation. Then we have, and dwelling unit, two-unit is similar beneath it because of the way the alphabet goes. Okay, then we have in the middle dwelling, multi-unit. So you could have one building, so I'm just kind of saying this so I can hear it.
Yeah.
One building or three or more detached units, including three or more dwelling units grouped on an individual lot, one lot, with common elements, including but not limited to identical features. So if you wanted to add detached dwelling units that have sleeping, eating, cooking, we can put that in there.
Yeah, and or remove maybe single, if we just had dwelling unit, not have it single. And then it, then it would be clearer that when you say.
From the first, from the first.
Yes.
Yeah. Just call it a dwelling unit, not a.
Oh, just define the dwelling unit instead of.
And then do we want to clarify which lot?
Well, do we have dwelling unit up here?
Well, that's it.
No.
We don't, no, but we don't have it separate. We could, but dwelling unit.
We could, we could just define dwelling unit.
Yeah, well.
We can do it right now.
We can do single, multi.
Okay.
And then.
It just seems like if you got rid of the word single, then isn't that the definition?
Cover them all.
And then you could, I mean, yes, you could then say single dwelling unit and then multi two. I, I guess I was just trying to get at that understanding because I, I, I'm a little bit.
Yeah, so we could actually put it into a dwelling unit and then put eating and sleep, you know, all this about eating and sleeping. And then we say, single unit, one.
Right.
Um, then the two-unit and then, yeah. And then the multi.
Do we clarify which lot we mean anywhere, tax or legal?
In, in planning, any, any time in the planning code, I do not think they define tax lot because that's an assessor's term. And in land use, you use.
I just wonder if it might be beneficial for us to define it one way or another.
Or legal lot.
Yeah, I just, maybe that teaches us how to.
I think we do have a definition of lot. You probably don't have it in here, but, um, because we didn't put in the ones that we weren't changing unless there was some reason that they were connected, but.
Here you say lot area means the total area encompassed within the acreage that is within the lot lines of a lot.
Says a lot, a lot.
It does say a lot, I know. I don't know that the word should be.
But I don't think we would want to define tax lot because it, it doesn't have anything to do with planning. I mean, we think it does, but it doesn't.
If they're different, are they different?
I mean, there's, the assessor calls it, calls a lot, that's their lot.
But it's the same piece.
No, it's not, not necessarily, because they, you could go in there tomorrow and get a tax lot. If you had a piece of property and you needed to get a house and you needed it on some certain size thing that was connected to the house. But you had three acres over here or something, you could get a separate tax lot.
I have that, I have two lots out of town and one of them has a house and one of them has a shop and it's one acre total and each half, half a thing, but, but I'm not, that doesn't matter here.
I don't know if they're legal lots because I would have to see them and see.
I just wonder for our, because clarity seems to be what we're going for and, and they are different terms.
There's about this pile of papers about how you get a legal lot.
I think it's taken care of.
Put that in the parking lot too.
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to take it, we're going to.
Parking lot?
Count on. I'm tired.
They're either grand upon the end or they're done by a subdivision or a partition.
Okay, so just for the developer or whoever or whatever will easily be able to determine what that means and has no argument whatsoever.
I'm not saying that sometimes it's not a problem because a deed, you have to be able to read the deed and you have to be able to read the maps and what they're really telling you.
And, and we, I mean, this gets to the thing of, you know, like, do you have every, every person who's going to build a house, do a complete survey and make sure you know where their survey lines are? You know, we get into these little tussles where somebody in one place is building on the other person's. You know, there's like so much that we can't.
Or did.
Get into.
Oh, they built a fence 10 feet under someone else.
Yeah, like you, there's so many, so many details that.
You can't.
You can't do it all.
Well, so, so it's one or the other though, that's right, is it not one or the other?
In planning, they talk about legal lots.
So can we just say?
In the assessor's office, they deal with tax lots.
Right, right, so can't we just say legal lot once or something and be done with it or?
Well, I think we.
It's implied, it's like, are you saying it's just like?
I get it and I get it, it's just, it's a can of worms, but that's what we're here to do it is, we opened a can of worms.
Not going to go there.
No.
I think it's a detail, I don't think.
It's a, it's a planning nightmare.
Well, that's exactly what we're trying to alleviate.
I know, but I don't know if we're going to be able to alleviate it when the attorneys are still dealing.
I guess it just.
We just have to, let's put that one in the parking lot.
We, we've never honestly had a big argument about it. It's just, you go to them and they say, yeah, this is a tax lot, no, that's not a legal lot. You go here and we say, we tell you whether what you have in front of us is probably a legal lot. But we don't use tax lots, even though a lot of times they're very close in the intersection and they're the same thing, but they're not always.
And strangely, that's like the, it seems like the tax lots are whatever, it's like on the county website, that's like GIS system. So it's kind of confusing for that reason, but a lot of times those, those lots are wrong or the, you know, that.
They're not wrong, they're just wrong for planning.
They're wrong for planning, they're, they're, they're more like a schematic thing.
And they're behind, I guess.
About, yeah.
They're behind.
I like to use both the GIS and the assessor's records. The assessor's records have things that you can't find.
It's more up to date.
Other places, well, I mean, they have things like easements and things on them that you can't find on the GIS.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I.
Sorry.
I just seems, I can't believe it's like, oh, yeah, I mean, I, I believe you.
I could.
I think it's kind of like, I think it sounds like it's more like, you know, like the alphabet is A, B, C, D, E, F, G in this world. And then somebody says, well, what is the letter B? You know what I mean? I think it's like.
It just seems to me like a, a, something to, to, to take and appeal, to appeal with. Look, it says a lot, it doesn't describe if it's a tax lot or a thing lot or a lot thing or, you know, I mean, that's all. I have no dog in the fight, I don't care, I just, well, I do care.
You do care.
And it, I can't believe that it's so complicated, that's all, Crystal, it's.
It's not complicated, but it's.
Legally treacherous, is that what it is? Is it?
Can, the county, I mean, I own a piece of property that has about, I don't know, 14 tax lots on it.
Oh, really?
But they're not legal lots, that's, it's in Douglas County. And so I think that's what you're referring to. They, they partitioned it off for tax purposes.
But then because you haven't sold any of those lots, then it's one.
They're not lots for sale.
Okay, so maybe I just.
They are, they are just, they call them tax lots and I pay the fire and the library and all that on all 14.
I give up, I cry, I was, it's more complicated than I thought, all I was looking for was the definition. Yeah, yeah.
Legal.
Yeah, it sounds more, much more complicated than I had dreamed, dreamt.
I'll check on it. If there is a definition that would fit, that would help us, we'll put it in, we'll.
Okay, thanks, thank you very much.
So Crystal, to go back to your thing about conditional uses and we still have outright and conditional uses in our code, we're still keeping that general section, right?
Yeah, look at section 32. It's.
The page is that, what page?
Additional uses are on page 41. And you look on page 41, chapter 1732, conditional uses. And you see all the wording that's in regular font on page 41 is already from our code. So you see it has 1732050 additional standards governing conditional uses. Then it has setbacks, we didn't change it, it has limitations on access, we don't change it. Then we have standards and criteria, we have a few changes and then we get into criteria and that goes on. And one of them's pretty simple, we're wanting them to have a pre-application and they're going to do a conditional use permit so that they can have a clear pathway of what they need to do on page four. We want them to do a site plan, just like we're doing in site plan review. In other words, we don't want them to come in with it on a napkin or in their head. We want it, we want them to think out where they want all the different things on that site. And then on page 42, there's more conditional use. You'll see at the top on B, we had a bunch and we kind of changed the names to update them. And we've added some different things. Multi-unit dwelling, I thought we didn't have that in there. That might be a mistake that we didn't catch. I'll see. Cause we were supposed to take it out.
For conditional use, I can't be in.
Yeah.
It has to be a, it has to be an outright use.
Have to be permitted use and then it would have a site plan review.
And is that, is that requirement, I thought that, that those requirements were for communities over 2,500. They're for all communities, like some of those housing requirements that were coming down from the governor?
Well, ADUs we don't.
Right.
ADUs, but all the housing rules, manufactured dwellings, the, uh, anything like, like an apartment in the ten M U, they are, they cannot be a, a conditional use.
Right, but like multifamily in R1 and R2?
Multi-family can't be in R1.
But it can be in R2, okay.
Possibly, R2, I think.
I'm going to look back and see.
That's the thing that I, I can't remember that. I, I think it was in R2, that makes sense.
So I'm looking at R1.
The R2 is?
We have uses permitted outright.
No, R2 is, I don't think so.
Oh, none in R1. No, I'm on the, so R2. They're not in there.
What page is R1 and R2 on, I'm sorry?
R2 is page 20. So.
Multi-unit dwelling, yes, R2, item 3. So, so R2 is for higher density and a multi-unit dwelling is.
Yeah.
And it's permitted.
Yes.
Permitted, yeah. So I, I'm pretty sure that this multi-unit dwelling should not be in the conditional uses. But I will check back with all the different uses and make sure that we haven't put it in the wrong place somewhere.
Okay.
So then we were going through conditional uses. So you have different things like schools, hotel, hotel.
I, I was thinking more like, you know, we're by every zone, we still have the outright uses and we still have the conditional uses. You know, like in every use zone, we still have that structure.
Well, and, and something, this is what's confusing about doing this real fast here. Some of these things can be a conditional use in one zone, but an outright use in another zone.
Right, yeah.
And I think that's why we let the multi-unit dwelling slip. Because we were, we are allowing some of those things to be both, but it depends on what zone it's in. In other words, a hotel in a, one zone might be a conditional use. But in another zone, it might be an outright use, like the commercial zone.
Yeah.
But maybe if it's in something else, it might, so, yeah.
Yeah. And the thing.
I'm obviously getting concerned.
A thing about, the thing, one thing I was, all I have to look about was the, you had the boutique motel thing of like a multiplex turning it into a motel, like in the commercial zone or something. Because then, you know, does that compete with hotels that have actually, you know, and this is sort of a thing with vacation rentals, but they have higher, you know, they have sprinkler requirements. They have all sorts of things that hotels have to meet. And so if you create a thing that's like, pretty much like a hotel, but it's not, doesn't have to really meet everything anyway, that was sort of something I had thought about with the multiplex. But if it can't be an STR, I guess I'll have to figure out, can multiplexes become STRs in, they could in the commercial and the 10 MU, right?
I have the code, Rick.
What are you asking?
Could a multiplex in the commercial or the 10 MU become an STR? Yeah, right.
I think there's a piece of it that has to be a. You can't have multiple things going if it's an STR. You can't have.
I don't remember, so that's why I'm just asking. I didn't look it up, I'm sorry.
Like in a fourplex that's residential, you couldn't have an STR in one of them.
I mean, could you switch it over? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying if somebody built a multiplex and they thought, oh, I'm going to build like a fourplex and make it into four vacation rentals.
Well, I mean, somebody did do something like that.
Yeah, we have that a number of times. That's what I'm asking.
That's why she's asking specifically, I think.
We've had that done in a couple of places.
I think that that might have happened between what the city approved and what the.
What the county allowed.
Yes, what the county allowed.
The change order thing, that loophole, yeah, that, that gets us every time.
Exactly, and that's what.
But what I'm just trying to look for it in our code, just because of, as I said, the hotels have, you know, these other requirements of sprinklers and all that jazz. So it's just.
Well, they would have to meet building requirements to be able to switch it over.
So even if they were, if, so you're saying if a multiplex though was a STR, like a four unit or six unit multiplex was an STR?
When you say multiplex, I don't know what that is.
Multi-unit dwelling.
Like a, like a.
Well, I'm saying like a multi-unit dwelling.
Apartment, like a small apartment.
Of like six units says, oh, I'm going to make myself into STRs. In effect, they're making themselves into a boutique motel, is what I'm saying, right? That's kind of what I'm wondering.
So the, the short-term rental code says, short-term rental or short-term or STR means the transient renting of a dwelling unit for a period of 30 or fewer nights, but does not include a bed or bed and breakfast enterprise, hotel, motel and RV parks.
That would be, that's what I said earlier, I think that would fall into the bed and breakfast type. That would be without, was that common, is that common?
Well, one, if you have four and you're going to do one, could be a bed and breakfast. But if you had four or six and you were just going to do them all, then it's sort of like a loophole for a boutique motel, is what I'm saying.
That's what's going on at Battle Rock, right? Next to the field station.
Well, that's what happened. I mean, that's happened already, but what would happen next?
Actually, that's a little different situation. There's only one dwelling unit there. The rest are bedrooms.
Because there's only like one kitchen.
There's one dwelling unit and four bedrooms. But they're rented out separately. I believe that it's now being used as a. What's it called? A.
Lodging house. It's a lodging house, which has a different definition than all the other things you've mentioned.
So we don't have that and we don't have that defined enough.
Correct.
So there's going to be a new term that they call it every single time that we.
Yes, and they're going to find a way.
And there's a will, there's a way.
But it still needs to be registered with the state and have a health inspection and a safety inspection.
I see.
It's a different thing that we hadn't come across.
So do we?
Lodging.
Do we touch beds, would you touch?
Code, definitions?
Bed tags.
Are you asking if it should be done?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I know I'm putting you on the spot. I'm, I'm just talking out loud. I'm like, who is? I'm going to put that in the, maybe I'll put that in the parking lot. I, I mean, I, I like to find the loopholes. I mean, if the intent is to help with housing and the intent is to, I mean.
It's a commercial business. It should be, it should be accommodated as far as I'm concerned, but it should be done in a legal way.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
It isn't a 10 MU, so it's a commercial zone. Yeah, it's a business.
You don't want me. Yes, did you have a comment?
At least if, I think if I'm following all of this correctly, because the council has already voted to table the STR discussion, this conversation seems like it would be more appropriate when discussing the STR code more than the housing codes for the same reason the ADUs were better suited there. So when you're discussing whether or not ADU, you know, exception, ADU restriction should be in the STR code, it'd probably be the time to talk about multiplex slash cottage clusters being in there as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for that advice. Okay, so to keep things moving here, because we don't want to be too long, I do want to have the discussion, two more discussions that I would like to have this evening. One is to discuss the extension of conditional use permits, that chunk of things. And then I want to make sure we have time to have a little discussion about how we want to tackle this moving forward. Because of so many other things that we also have to tackle in the coming months. So those are the two things I'd like to, to, to work on next. Can you, do you remember where the, that is that? Let's see, oh, here it is, page. 46, time limit on a conditional use approval. And I'm getting into this just after Mr. Russell left. I didn't intend to do that, but. I.
Two years and then three extensions.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that I think we're, we're, you know, he was asking, he had asked us if we are going to grandfather him in or not or whatever. I think that's a, that's a separate issue. The question is, moving forward, what do we want to have for our policy for extensions? And then we'll deal with that other question in a different way.
I personally feel after five years that so many things have changed that it should just start over again. And that everybody understands that from the beginning.
We have.
I mean, three extensions seems like a lot. In five years, things can be, you know, now you're grandfathered in to just keep going on.
I think that the reason the planning commission didn't deal with that comment, that, that they wanted that to, so that they could be grandfathered in was because we didn't feel that any of us had the legal understanding that if they feel that's important, their attorney probably needs to take that issue separately to the city council or the planning commission first and give us the reasoning of why that should be grandfathered in. We do have code language in our code that says that things that are already set in stone, that that's how they are. What we don't know is if the timing thing of how many, because this is like a branch of the, of the approval. It's a bran, I mean, it was done, but this is branching off. It's not the initial thing, but it is related to it. Why doesn't their attorney? I mean, I asked their attorney that once. And, and his answer was like, well, we'll follow whatever laws there are and then they come in with this. I don't know the answer. You know, if we're supposed to be continuing to give approvals because that's what they were set up under when they first got approved, well, then we should do it. But an attorney needs to tell us that. And we don't have an attorney.
Right, no, I think we have to, I was going to say, I think we have to get a legal opinion on that particular issue. But, so that's why I think we should just, you know, we've had experience with this now and see that, you know, there's problems if you don't have any limit. So that's, I think, what this is in response to, so.
Whether we should add some verbiage.
Yeah, whether this is, and I'm sure maybe the, Greg, you could tell us, how did you come up with, how did the planning commission come up with this, this version to help address that question?
To address the. Three extensions.
Yeah, just the idea of like, where did you come up with this framework for us?
Yeah. We talked about it. I. It currently says one year and it may be renewed for a one-year period. If, if substantial construction has not taken place. The big issue for us was how do you define substantial construction? We did a lot of thinking about that.
Right.
And we just came up with what we came up, so we, I mean, you can go back to our planning meetings and you can see, we had, I, I copied numerous codes that we went through and we looked at them and.
You mean like from other cities?
From other cities.
To see what they did, uh huh, okay.
Some say, oh, a certain percentage of the total fee has to be paid. Some say a footing has to be, the footing has to be put in. There are various, various, I can't rethink of them all, but. We talked about how, how long a permit should be open. I asked Crystal if one year was long enough and she said, you know, in a lot of cases, one year is not long enough to get all the permits and stuff. So we said, well, let's, what about two years? She said that was a good idea. So we said two years, let's just give them two years. If they can't do it, let's give them an extension. Well, let's give them a couple of extensions. So we're talking three extensions to, to show, to pour some dirt, pour some concrete or to do something that, that is called substantial construction. And then if you look at what substantial construction is. And you can just read it. It involves construction. If anything involves construction, all necessary permits have been issued. Satisfactory documentation is provided to require construction has been commenced and diligently pursued.
Are you on 1732?
Zero six, yeah.
Yeah, the first paragraph, A, yeah, okay.
It's been commenced and diligently pursued. So, I mean, it's pretty, you could look your eyes and see, has this been pursued? Is there construction happening? And then with regard to new structures, because most conditional uses are new structures. There's, they pour a foundation. So in, in that case, construction of a building foundation self-satisfy that commenced diligently pursued. Then the other category is where you take a building that's already in place and they just want to use it for a different use. So if you just, if they just are using it for what they said they were going to use it for, then that's called substantial. That, 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 that makes the, the thing valid.
And they're done.
First, and they're done. And, and then it can continue or once they have had the substantial construction piece met, then they can continue construction and they don't have.
There's no extension or anything, right?
No, they can take so long and then it was brought up, well, what if they do this work for a while and then they, they work for three or four years on it and then they don't work anymore on it? That's why we added that, the part where it can be revoked. If it's idle for a year or whatever the security time is. It can be revoked because nobody wants to see like a half-finished job sitting around for years.
Well, and the other. Like, this seems to me like we're addressing a single issue and, and I, I know that maybe it's not intended to do that, but I think we are. It's what it appears as, because I can't think of any other project that has taken.
Oh, yes.
Oh, my God, we have.
Oh, yes.
Ten years?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, 17, 19 years.
And they keep getting.
No, and they didn't even.
No, no, I mean, are they actively seeking renewals of their?
No.
They, they got it.
Different, it was they got it.
It was a little different, but it's.
But the change, but the problem is the conditions change with water, with all sorts of stuff. So now we're stuck because we had this situation that we don't have any flexibility.
Even subdivisions are taking two and three years and we weren't doing that, we weren't renewing things in the subdivision ordinance to get into that whole thing. But our ordinance says they have a year and that's pretty tough sometimes.
Sure, yeah, especially well, given our shortcomings in the last several years, you know, we, not anybody here's fault.
Just a bunch of permits they have to get.
There's been some, we stumbled, right? But.
And I think this is, I kind of have to maybe take another, I don't think we're dealing with just one particular, I think we've seen some things happen in the city. We're trying to be fair and, and then, and then also do what's right for the city. And we, and give people expectations so that they actually know what they have to do. And I think that's really important.
And that's fair, I, I agree.
Because the, with the, the point.
So, so, let me just, the substantial laws of construction or progress, whatever that was, as defined, doesn't cover Mr. Russell's issue. It doesn't, it doesn't. And so. And I, while it may be addressing the other things like, like what you, what you're saying, then it doesn't. So because we look at substantial construction, couldn't the purpose claim it? You know, how do you? It just seems like that, I, I mean, you know, there's one guy sitting here. And, and I know that we would like to not take on singular type things. I mean, like saying addresses or anything like that when we do this kind of stuff, but. It just seems like it's of the utmost importance to Mr. This thing. And when we did the hearing last, I don't remember when it was, January or something like that, it was the, what is substantial? Progress or construction or whatever.
Construction, so this, the county, there's a, there's a difference. The county said can, progress.
Progress.
And that's why, that's why they're, the, the conditional use through the county was approved because there was progress. They deemed, they deemed progress a few years ago. But our code said construction. It's, 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 that, the wording of that part has not changed. Construction means you've done, you've done something.
Right, and so for, for us on, on this exercise, for this purpose that we'd be talking about, construction would mean the laying of pipe, because that's what's happening within the city, right?
Or the foundation for the pump station. That's what it is, yeah.
That's what it is.
Or part of the pump station or.
So it just all seems so difficult to navigate. I mean, it just all seems so difficult to navigate.
We worked on this hard. We worked on this hard.
And it really, and I applaud your work. I'm not, I don't say yes for a second. I just, it still seems like there's just these things that a person can apply or appeal to, you know.
Well, but so the reason, I mean, the thing that, one reason it got appealed several times is because it was so unclear, because it said you can do it for a year. And then that wasn't, then that was the question of, well, could you do it for a year, a year, a year? Because it was totally vague, so.
We would get approved.
Yeah.
Because the city approved it.
Because the city approved it.
But in the meantime, like the sewer plant's completely different.
Sure.
It's gone to.
No, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't be reviewed, but.
But it should start over again, I'm just saying. So that doesn't say that they can't get it. It just means that instead of keeping the same original conditional use, they're coming back again and just.
Updated information.
Getting up all the new information.
Yeah.
So shouldn't, I mean, my thinking is that it should be mandatory review at that point, not denial or not exclusive or restart all over because that then.
Unfortunately, there is no, as far as I know, there is no review of a conditional use permit. It just, it's just, it just runs out and it's just, and then it's reviewed again. The review is.
When after it's expired.
Or as it expires.
After it runs out, after they say, okay, you've had enough time, things have changed. We're gonna, go ahead and submit it again. We're gonna review it and we'll do it, you know, whatever.
But maybe this has to be changed and this little thing needs to be changed.
I get that, I get that.
Brett, would it make you feel better? I mean, I've been thinking, we've just been so busy, we haven't been able to do it. If I, if we had more time to get the legal opinion. I mean, does, I mean, is it a standard legal thing? Like you were saying, Crystal, of like, if somebody comes in under certain laws. I mean, it seems like planners always say that, like, oh, you know, we approved it under this situation, so. Yeah.
But it doesn't say whether it extends to continuing something that hasn't started.
Uh huh, right.
Grandfather, you have to have something to grandfather.
Right. But if you had, if you have a, you have a permit that was approved. What you have is the approved permit.
So why doesn't, if this is so important, why hasn't their attorney addressed this? I mean, they have the burden of proof. And it's like, so they're coming to us to try to make us resolve this in the code. But where is their burden of proof that they should? I mean, why don't they give that to us if they want this in the code? That's what I don't understand.
Provide us with a legal question. Provide, yeah, with a demand or.
And if an attorney told us.
You have to do this because X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Well, then we could, see, this is the thing that I'm still just trying to figure out and learn, because then we could run that past our lawyer and she would look at it and she would respond. Whereas if we say, oh, you know, we have a developer that, are we gonna have to do this to them? Then we're kind of on the hook to have her do all the research and figure it all out for us, which is gonna cost us a bunch of money. And that's what I think, yeah.
I think it was like, would we need any of this stuff that they would have that type of sense?
Not.
A long time ago, I mean.
Maybe.
Four hundred years ago when it started.
But I don't think.
There was talk about any staff time or.
Yeah, it's in their code somewhere.
But that's not, that's not how this is, that's not true. That's just not true, in our situation currently. But that's why, I mean, I know that they're inextricably tied, but I kind of feel like there's two things, which is, what do we want to? To me, the clean discussion is what do we want to have moving forward? And then we have to figure out some legal input as to.
If they qualify or not.
If they're gonna qualify or not, what we want to do.
Once we have decided what we want, we put it in here, then their attorney tells us whether it fits in. I mean, whether it fits them or whether it doesn't.
And that's kind of how things, I mean, this is why we need your help, Crystal, to know, how do things work like this? Because of, you know.
Because like now, if we put this in, I'm thinking, so then that's our law. Now they're past the last extension coming up.
But they're not, I don't think they would, I don't, honestly, I don't think this would apply to them. I think they would, I don't know.
The old rule, it would seem like they would need to come to us for another renewal.
They will need to come to us for another renewal.
In a year.
But we could say, no, you need to, now you need to come back and address the whole thing again.
But then their attorney could say, you can't do that.
And then we, then we know without our attorney having to do anything.
But we could, if we, well, first of all, one thing is that we're not gonna get this done by the time the next one rolls around, because it's probably gonna, it's due to roll down around in June. So, I mean, if it is a concern of the council to review it again, it is within our purview to say, you know, we've given you five times or however many times we've given you. We'd like to not accept it this time. We encourage you to come back. I mean, we could do that with the existing thing. I still think.
But it makes it easier down the road.
If we have.
If I feel, if we have, I like, this gives them lots of time.
Well, it gives a lot of time and it gives a clear sense. If you don't do it within five years, you're gonna have to come back. So that kind of just gives everybody a sense of what the expectation is.
It seemed like it would have made it much easier for planning and for the council in this case.
Yeah, yeah. But you are right, Brett, that substantial construction thing in this case, which is such a weird anomalous case.
And it is. I don't expect to ever see this again, you know?
Yeah, yeah. But we will have other cases where this can apply. This could apply, this extension on and on or.
The extension part, but not the mistle, what is progress?
Yeah. And it would seem that if there's permits too, you talked about that it takes a couple of years sometimes for permits. And if there's a big project that has a multi-pronged, multi-agency permitting process, which some of them are, then that can be a piece of it as well, you know, that. And I don't know if that, does that count as construction in your?
You know, I don't even think we would be here if we had, if we got reasons from them of why they wanted the extensions in writing.
They just wanted the extension period.
Well, I mean, they would come and they would say something, but there was never a written thing saying.
This is what we did.
This is what we've done, this is what we're working on, this is why we aren't pressing on this, because the EQ or whatever. I mean, they would say it, but the letters asking for these extensions were just.
Like one sentence.
The written thing was very short.
And the next year it would say something different.
But that's what all that was required.
That's not all. But when you have burden of proof and you're really serious, most people will go through all the things that they have done and do a presentation. Some of them even do PowerPoints. They do different things to show what's happening. They have pictures.
I would, I think.
I would too.
Yeah, it's important to you.
And I think where we have found, and I've stepped into this role, and I'm trying to understand that if we, if we are trying to pay our lawyer to come up with what hoops they need to do or we're trying to figure out what document they should sign to make sure that whatever. My, our lawyer said, that's not how it works. They, you are the one who's being proposed to. They need to do the work to come offer a proposal. And then our lawyer can say, yes, that makes sense and legally you can agree to it. Or, no, that's not legal, you can't agree to it. And the decision though becomes, if the answer is, yes, you can agree to that, then you folks have to make the decision if you are going to or not. That's your role. But the lawyer can just say, yes, it is legal for you to do this, or no, it is not. And if it's yes, then you get to decide yes or no.
If it's no, then.
And if it's no, then it's not. But we were trying to not, I think what we were asking before was to say, what do we need to ask them to do or what should we put forth to see what they want to do? And the lawyer was like, you've got this, the sack words.
Because what's gonna happen is you create this, you lay it out and then.
They're like, no, we're not doing that.
You're gonna find legal.
Or just say, that's not what we want and that's not what we want. Right. Okay, you guys, I wanna, we're off the topic and we shouldn't be talking about this in this context. But, but, but I know you're trying to say one other thing.
I'm not saying it.
I can just tell, you're just like, I'm gonna zip.
I'd like to say one thing. So what we did, we tried to deal with what could, what, we didn't try to deal with this other situation. We tried to deal, what do we want to see for the city to make it fair to everybody? So everybody knows what's gonna happen when they sign up. Tried to do our best with the substantial construction to try to look at and lay it out how we could. That's, and I think we should, I recommend that you look at it that way.
And it's possible in five years that there aren't any changes and it's just redoing the original conditional use. That's a possibility. But if something's changed in five years, then it can go into the new conditional use.
And they don't have us like over a barrel.
Right.
Basically.
And it protects the city from changing circumstances.
And this is a fair, very fair, having been on both sides and being over there for the whole year. This is very fair and it's pretty definitive.
You guys, I mean, the other thing I was gonna say is, one thing I appreciate that our planning commission has done recently with, you know, your involvement is this idea of going and looking, well, what do other cities do? Because other cities do have lawyers and, you know, they can, like, we don't all have to reinvent the wheel. We can look at what they did and why and then, you know, try to help figure it out. So, any other questions about this topic in particular for now? No, okay. So I'm gonna, I know, I shouldn't ask, I shouldn't have asked that. Melissa's probably ready to like punch me in the side here like, what? Don't ask that question.
Don't make that.
What I'd like to do with our last brief time of our meeting here is, is just ask you guys, what do you think we need to get through this code to the point of being ready to adopt it? And I'll just mention, I had a conversation with Councillor Pogswood, who called me today when he was telling me he couldn't make it. And he had a bunch of his questions and I encouraged him to reach out to you, Greg, to ask his questions. But I asked, what do you think it's gonna take? Like, you know, what will you, what will be comfortable when you'll be ready to do this? You know, and he thought, oh, we gotta go through it line by line. I want to go through it line by line. This.
That is quite, quite familiar to me.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't mean that that's a bad thing to go through it line by line.
Yeah.
But have you ever gone through the code that we already have?
It has eight million problems with it. Like our favorite example is somebody gets to, gets sent to the jail of the business.
Well, I mean, sometimes people have been, not the council, of course, but we get mixed up when we see the words. And sometimes the ones that people don't like are the ones that we've had for 20 years and nobody's complained about it.
Right, yeah, 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 right. No, I know that, Crystal. So I'm just telling you, that's what he mentioned. And we've all along thought it would be actually really great to just read through the code and weed out some of these things that are, yeah, out of date or crazy or a little weird.
It discounts the word, displays any mistrust or distrust in the plan. I don't think it does that.
Yeah.
Because you're just bringing something forward and that's what the work is, right?
Yeah.
So, John?
Right. But ours is to know exactly what every one of those lines says. And so, you know, I think it kind of.
Well, we have to find the balance.
Deal.
And not to say, like, you know, I mean, not to question the work. How could you question the work without knowing what everyone?
Yeah.
Or if it's actually smart, you can just read it and know that those words are, some of the stuff I can't understand. I mean, I'll be the person to.
Well, and the point.
Forever, you know, and that's.
Well, and that gets to the.
That's what this is for.
Yeah, and well, that's what this is for. There's sort of two ways to see it, I think. One is that we appoint our planning commission, we get a grant, we hire Crystal, who's our professional planner, who has years of experience. They go through this process, they do due diligence, they consult with the state lawyers. They do all this stuff to produce something that's as best as they can get. And therefore, we can go through it, I mean, to me, and then we see things that say, gosh, that maybe that doesn't work for Port Orford, what about this? Like, as opposed to that we have to go back and do the same thing that they just did. You know, just for the reason to bring up the word lot again or something like that. There may be things that, so we could go down a rabbit hole like that, but.
Take two more, two years to do just this.
Well, what I'm asking is, what?
If we get hung up on lot and we get hung up on a few things, we're only gonna get through a few pages.
Well, here's.
For Tim's, you know, Tim's point is that when he goes through all, you know, how we, goes through all these lines, that's now.
Well, so here, so I have a couple of ideas, I'm just gonna, I don't know what, it sounds like, I'm a little bit unclear. Do you want to go through it like line by line or not really?
My point is that would, that's now, that's what today's meeting is. To go through this and say, I have a problem with this line or I don't understand this line.
Yes, right.
Or whatever, but, but I like, I respect Tim's opinion and I like to hear his point on things and then that might put a light bulb up, you know.
Right.
You know.
Yeah. Well, he has some certainly things he has on the RV park side, you know, because he knows that part really well. How about you, Sarah? I mean, you've been working on it for a year already, you're probably, do you have, I mean, are you, what would it take for you to feel comfortable with?
Because I've already been through this and I, again, went through, made notes. For us to go line by line, there's so many questions. I think that we hired someone, we spent a year. I think if we as councillors went through and read, you know, went through, it takes a lot, it's no fun. I'm sorry, it's really fun.
Engaging reading.
No, it's not.
Engaging reading.
And if we.
Quite a plot twist too.
Each of us might have a different, like, take on a different part, might be more.
Different people might know, like, Tim knows the RV park.
He might want to do that. I might have something with AD, whatever. But that would probably be more beneficial than to spend. It would take a lot of time to go through this line by line.
Well, do we want to maybe take two years and take one thing at a time? And like one month, you do ADUs and we read the ADU all the way through in one session.
We can't take that amount of time.
No, we can't.
Well, so one thought I had, I mean, so I'm just kind of trying to come up with a strategy for us because to get back, you weren't at that finance meeting, Brett, but let me tell you, between now and the end of the budget season, we've also got some other huge things we gotta, we got like to tackle. So, I mean, part of me today was like, oh, my gosh, you know, should we really be doing this right now? Or can we, do we need to put it off till after the budget? And/or, I know we're keeping the record open because we've paid to do the mailing and do all this stuff right now. And so, you know, there's an advantage to keeping the record open. And so another thought I has had was like, well, what if we do divide this up into six parts? And we just say, okay, at the next meeting, we're gonna do page, you know, 10 through 20 or whatever it is, and we just spend like 15 minutes of the meeting doing that one section. And then we go through it, we approve that section. We don't adopt the ordinance, but we approve that section. And then the next meeting, we do the next one. And then, I mean, it seems kind of tedious, but I don't know if that would, people would want to do that or if enough people feel comfortable with having like, you know, this is on our agenda next time. Maybe this, this meeting helped people to think about things and we could come back and have another meeting and feel ready. That's kind of what I'm just trying to figure out is.
Like my, I'm pretty close. You know, there's only a few things with the term, the lot term, I would like to, there. And I'm not sure how I feel generally about the six-year cap thing or whatever it is, you know, two times three, you know, or.
The conditional use extension, yeah.
That's like an ideological thing more than, that's the Bolts thing. So that's kind of, those are the couple of things that I have. And if Tim had more, then I'd love to hear his, but he's not here to.
I'll tell, I can tell you what he just mentioned a few to me, just so, well, actually, I'll do that afterwards. Let's figure out what we're gonna do strategy-wise. So what do you think, Deanna? How are you feeling?
I think if we sat and, you know, had a couple more meetings like Brett said, like this, where we can spend some more time going through it. I don't think this is something that we take years to, to sit and digest.
Without going word for word though.
What?
Without going word for word.
Well, they've already done the lion's share of the work. So why are we gonna try to reinvent what they've done?
Yeah.
That's how I feel too. And that's what ends up.
You know, the language that's being changed and, you know, it's all there for us.
Well, well, one of the reasons I thought about divvying it up, uh, and maybe we just do it in half, was because like I know when I was kinda sitting down to think about this, I was like, oh my gosh, there's so much to go through. And like you, I wasn't sure, are we gonna talk about this? Are we gonna talk about that? And like, maybe it would be helpful if we said, okay, we're gonna focus on talking about the first half of it. You know, if anybody has any questions in section, blah, 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 through that, that's the, that's gonna be the meat of it. And then we try to just be definitively through that. The problem is, you know, we can always have one person not here and then they're, they miss out and we wanna bring everybody along. But anyway.
I agree with, uh, maybe breaking it in two and going through.
And having an objective to get, to agree on the first half and then agree on the second half and be done.
Yeah. Okay.
I would be good with that. Now, Owen, I wanted to ask one more thing. What if, what if there was some horrendous mistake and it became obvious in the next couple of years? Can one thing be changed? There's a process to...
You can always change your code. It's just, the problem here was we're trying to get everything into one time limit. And even as we were doing this, the legislature was making more rules. And there's things that we're already behind now because we, we didn't have the money or the commitment or requirement to get those done.
And, and the cost for doing a change is basically, well, I mean, of course, we're having all of the costs of having, um, Crystal's expertise, which was paid for the grant, but there's also, we have to do a mailing to everybody who's, you know...
But we could, we could be getting more money for those things. At the time that we set up this grant, the city manager didn't choose to put those expenses in.
Yeah, right, right. I know. So we, and I'm, I'm super excited that you guys have done all this work and, cause we haven't, that's one of the reasons we're so far behind is cause we haven't been keeping up for a very long time.
The legislature's been doing stuff too. There's no way to keep up with them.
Yeah.
You know, I remember you would come in once a year and say, we've got some housekeeping to do. And then it was a block here and stuff. And then we all just, you know...
Yeah, we used to get smaller grants to do things along the way.
Yeah. So hopefully we can keep that up.
They're gonna have another grant, uh, coming up at the end of this year. And my guess is that we wanna be done, I mean, the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Then there's gonna be another one. And I I think we can put in for that, but we, we probably need to be done with.
This, okay. Well, what I would like to do then, okay, just hearing this, I mean, I think I, what I, what I've been meaning to do is sit down with our budget schedule and like work backwards, like we gotta get that done by the end of the fiscal year. And we know we wanted another finance committee meeting and we'll probably have to have another, maybe another council meeting before the actual budget meetings. I gotta, we gotta see how much, all of a sudden, between now and the fiscal year seems like, oh my gosh, there's no time. Yeah, sorry. So we gotta like, we have to do the finance thing as the priority, but I think, for example, if we could divvy this up into two, if Tim, Councilor Pogswood could talk to you separately, Greg, maybe he would have fewer concerns or, you know, whatever. He could get his things answered or, and then he would be able to be more concise when he comes in and have his things. And then maybe if we do uh, a meeting, we have a meeting coming up next week. Maybe I will look at what the, a good break is and we'll just say, okay, we're gonna do like page one through 30 next week. Set aside like 20 minutes during our regular meeting. Open the hearing again. Do those pages. Do our best. Keep the hearing open. Do it again. And then set...
All this stuff is just like written in blood, you know? And, and until the blood's poured, you don't know if you've done it right or not. So...
But, but I'm sure that most of it is good, but like, I'm just feeling like if there's some glaring thing.
Well, and the thing is, we're, we're building on, as I said, if these guys doing research on all the other cities, talking to the state attorney, doing, you know, yeah, they're, I feel like they're, they've done a lot of due diligence for us. And then, you know, then we hit, this is the thing, we hit these mistakes and we try to fix them. Like, like this thing about the extension of the conditional use, it's been a problem in our community. It's taken up a lot of our time and so getting a solution would be a way to address that. And then there's gonna be another, there's other problems in our code. So, you know...
I think the question like, it's the transition from like, the, like the planning commission is, is not political, you know, just lack of better terminology. It's not a political body. You're not like...
We don't care.
Right? You don't care and you shouldn't care.
None.
But then that comes to us and then we all. And
Well, I don't...
That's where, that's where the, I have the, the, the disconnect, or not even disconnect, but like where the clutch needs to come into play. And, and what, you know, what I feel like my constituents want to see. And, and it's not maybe what Portland or who, you know, or, and I don't mean I don't wanna discount anything you've done. I don't wanna sell it. In fact, I applaud it. But we are a political device and we answer to our constituents and, um...
We do, but when it comes to land use, unfortunately, actually from my view, we don't sometimes because we actually have to follow the law. So we take a low oath to follow the law and there may be things that people don't like or don't want. But if we choose to not follow the law, you know, I mean, we, we're gonna be in binds like that. Well, but there's state law, there's, there's all these other...
There's, there's laws written through this.
Sure.
And there's the law, we can't change the law in the middle of a decision, you know, so...
But, but we're like, what we're doing now is crafting those laws, kind of, right?
Looking to the future to try to do our best to help us. You, you said it very eloquently at the beginning, Sarah. You said something.
I don't say anything eloquently. I just feel something to you.
You do. You, you, you come in with some really good ones.
You come in clutch a lot of the time. You just gotta wade through it.
You, you, but you said something along the lines of, yeah, you know, just planning for the, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. That's what, this is, it's a structure. It's a framework for our future.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, and, and you know what? Sometimes my neighbors might not like something that's really good for the city and for the future. So you have to make a decision.
You do. And it's, there's, that's, that's your...
Cause you're not gonna satisfy everybody.
Political capital now. And, and who has how much political capital and then how much you're willing to lose or, or gain or, or whatever should to, maybe you win some, you lose some, you know? Maybe you lose this one. Uh, just stay in the seat to, to win five others.
Yeah. It's so funny that you say that, cause I just like, don't think of city council as being very political. I mean, political, I think of it as like, we're just really problem solving. Yeah.
But maybe I'll go home and Google.
Okay. Well, on that note, it is actually about to be seven, it's seven, uh, I'm going to adjourn this, oh, no, I'm, we are not, we're keeping the, just to be clear, we're keeping this hearing open. And, um, it's going to be resumed at our next regular meeting. April 17th at 5:30 PM. But we will adjourn the work session at this time at 5:30. I think it's, is it okay to adjourn the meeting and keep the hearing open?
You can adjourn it because you're...
We're continuing the hearing.
The meeting to be April 17th, meeting day.
Yes, we're continuing the hearing to the April 17th, but we are adjourning this work session.